I will call the Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting for May 2 of 2022 to order. If you'll please rise and join me in a prayer along with a invocation from Reverend Griff Bodya.
Thank you. God of all glory and Lord of all life, we come before you this morning in faith believing that you will grant our supervisors your wisdom, your insight and discernment throughout the process of this meeting. We lift before you the elected leadership of Mojave County who are invested with the authority, administrative power and vision to develop this region's future. Theirs is both the privilege and the responsibility to govern this territory and its people. We humbly ask you, Lord God, to equip them to face the challenges and the changes necessary to benefit our citizenry. And we give you all the praise, thanksgiving and glory for your divine grace and guidance in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorney on any item contained in this legal in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7. Motion and action to call for an executive session to be held on May 16, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A, 3, 4, and 7 to discuss legal items noticed on this agenda with an asterisk.
So made.
You've heard that motion and second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Discussion of any pending litigations, Mr. Attorney.
None today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Committee or legislative reports, Supervisor Bishop.
Good morning. Once again, I attended the County Supervisors Association Executive Board and was chair of that meeting. And also, following that was the regular County Supervisors Association Director's meeting, of which I attended and also chaired. And then the following day, I attended the Arizona Association of County Officials. And that one was telephonically. And then on the 26th, I met with Senator Kelly's staff, Ms. Coral Evans, and discussed some of the water issues as it relates to Lake Powell, Lake Mead, Lake Mojave, and all the way down to Lake Havasu. I have asked the Bureau of Reclamation, as well as the National Park Service, to come back and give a presentation, which will be in a public forum held at this auditorium May 25 at 5:30 p.m. We'll have some of our elected officials there, we'll have officials from both those agencies, and a pretty interesting question and answer period after they give their presentations. So just a little heads up that that invitation will be coming out, we'll do a news release. But I think it's important that folks know about it early and start making plans to attend if they're interested. I'll also invite the entire board to attend that because of everything going downstream from District 4 all the way to District 3.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. I too attended CSA. I crashed the Wednesday night Small County Caucus. Leo Biassucci, Representative Biassucci and Senator Borelli were the speakers, and they gave kind of a glum report about the state of the budget talks that are going on. And we're still waiting to hear about what's going to happen with that. Then on Saturday, on Thursday, it was the Medium County Caucus where we heard from the head of the Department of Housing. Very interesting, they're doing some interesting work with low-income housing, low-cost housing and workforce housing. And then the main meeting, we heard from Jamie Schneider, who is the Director of Access. Again, there's some very exciting programs and a lot going on for rural Arizona. They offered, both offered to come and do a presentation to the board or for the public, whatever we want, and I believe we should take them up on that offer. They don't do it often. Jamie Schneider, I think the last time she went out of Phoenix, she came here, and we appreciate that, we learned a lot. So I'm hoping I could work with the county manager and we can set something up. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Wednesday, the House Appropriations had one of their meetings, and they got into the dependency on Russian uranium. I'm grateful for the members of the House and the Energy Secretary who have listened to our uranium message. The Senate Committee is going to meet on this Thursday. Some of the comments we got, Representative Robert Latta, Republican Ohio, why did the DOE not request funding for the uranium reserves program for the second fiscal year in a row? The answer was, we were provided funding in June of 2021. This June, the DOE will be issuing a funding opportunity announcement for a uranium reserve using the $75 million appropriated from the June of 2021. Representative McKinley, Republican, West Virginia, according to an article written by Senator Brasso, the DOE has not purchased uranium in the past year and a year and a half, is that correct? The DOE is issuing a funding opportunity announcement in June to create a strategic uranium reserve. McMorris Rogers, United States, does not have the uranium production needed to advance nuclear technology. Do you agree that the Russian invasion has increased urgency to develop domestic nuclear fuels? Answer yes, and the DOE can brief you on a plan to increase uranium production. Latta, will the DOE commit to helping the United States reduce reliance on Russia and uranium investments in America and nuclear leadership through supporting legislation like the No Russia Act of 2022? Granholm, yes, I support the United States developing domestic resources. McNary, Democrat, California, what is the status of the high assay low enriched uranium? It's HALU is what they call it, availability program, and how will the DOE obtain a reliable domestic supply? Answer, increased HALU production is critical for civilian reactors and nuclear power. The United States cannot rely on Russia for uranium. It's only taken us 11 years, and we're starting to get some movement. The next generation small modular reactors require this HALU, which is 19% pure uranium 238, whereas the uranium for current reactors is only 5%. The higher grade uranium contained in the Arizona strip brachia pipes will get them closer to what the next generation modular reactors requires, a lot faster than uranium found in the rest of the U.S. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Linganfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. I'd like to offer just a few Arizona legislative water updates. Not much has happened in the last couple of weeks. We're still in somewhat of a holding pattern until they get the budget figured out. But on the rural management area legislation, which is on our groundwater basins here in Mojave County, there are still party, state party meetings and other stakeholder meetings that are continuing regarding the makeup of the proposed Arizona Water Authority that the Governor's Office has introduced this legislative session, as well as the provisions that need to be modified or changed, including transparency, governance, water rights, issues, et cetera. Our team is focusing on language that would allow for both forgivable loans to rural areas for water infrastructure projects, in addition to continuing to perfect the RMA language so that we are prepared once the AWA session, the special session for the Arizona Water Authority is called. Again, our legislative district team is going to be pushing to incorporate that RMA language. Also on the RMA front, the USGS study on the health of the Walpai aquifer, I believe that was done in 2018 or 19. Perhaps Manager Elters can mention a little bit more about this, but his staff is working with USGS right now to run that water model that we partnered with the City of Kingman on. They're going to be running that model this month on the basin to see what has happened since 2018, 19. So I'll leave it at that. If you want to add anything else to that, Sam, you can. Regarding the fourth priority water, again, we're still in sort of a holding pattern. Last week, I did get a meeting scheduled with the CAP, the Director of CAP, the Board of the CAP, the Chair of the CAP Board, the CAP attorneys, as the Central Arizona Project took it, they voted to oppose House Bill 2389, which would prevent the subsequent transfers off of the river. Our team made considerable arguments regarding CAP's incorrect analysis of that bill. However, the CAP attorneys, I think his name is Jay Johnson, did not agree with our analysis, and our team basically fears that their opposition is more directly tied to a desire for future fourth priority water transfers rather than the actual legally legality of the legislation. We are confident in the legality of our position. Our legislative district team continue to watch other water bills and intend to tie those bills to language for P4, such as the Harkaway La Bill, that's 2055, and the McMullen and Butler Basin Bill, that's House Bill 2095. Those bills have not moved in the Senate, but should they move, our team will lobby to ensure that all issues move at the same time. And last but not least, the Walpai Tribe Federal Water Settlement, as I mentioned last time, a couple of weeks ago, Representative Holland's office has now introduced that federal legislation, and it is tentatively scheduled for a U.S. House hearing on May 12. We expect the companion legislation to be introduced in the Senate this week. Once we have the final Senate bill, we will send both House and Senate versions to the full board for their review. The state parties, including the County of Mojave, will be submitting statements in support of that legislation for the hearing record. I know that everybody's glad to see that legislation introduced. It's been years and years and years that they've been working on that, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I attended telephonically the Workforce Development Board meeting, and they discussed some appointments to fill some vacancies that are going to be coming to the Board of Supervisors for approval. And we had some good presentations from economic developers at the end of the meeting and what was going on with the different agencies that participated in the workforce development. I also had a meeting with Congressman Gosar's representative, Penny Pugh. We discussed the potential reallocation of some of the ARPA money that I signed a letter to the congressional delegation regarding, and we also discussed the problem with the South Cove launch ramp, the fact that the water is so low in Lake Mead now that you're there having to launch boats in mud and rocks, and that's going to kill, if you can't launch your boat, that's going to kill Mead View, it's going to just be terrible for them. So I discussed that with them. So they're aware of that situation, but I would ask all the other supervisors to make, continue to address that with them also because it's an important issue. County Manager report.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. No county managers will report today. However, if I may, really quick, tag along with Supervisor Linganfelter's comment related to the USGS study, really quick. The study is based on a water model for underground water table that is, that was developed and is maintained by the USGS. The results that the study provided were primarily based on the, on that model. We did ask, right after that study was completed, for them to work with us and to train our staff so we can use that model. They agreed to. That training took place the week before last week, so we are thrilled with the opportunity. They are continuing to help us refine the transitional data that it would take to feed that model and then to help us analyze the results of such. We expect to be at a point either at the end of this month or early in June to be able to run the model on our own with some handholding from them. And what that will do is enable us to gather the data that is key to the model on an annual basis, run it and be able to provide that information to the board and to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I need a motion to approve the minutes from April 4, 2022, BOS meeting.
So made.
You've heard that motion and second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it. Call of the public. Chris Rodardi and Scotty McClure is on deck.
Good morning, Chris Rodardi, Kingman. In 1788, James Madison said, "I believe there are more instances of the abridgement of the freedom of the people by gradual silent encroachments of those in power than by violent sudden usurpations." Those words spoken not long after our nation's founding eerily foretold the future of America today. The subtle tearing down of our great land has been in the works since its beginnings. As you recall, Benjamin Franklin, following the 1787 Convention, to the woman asking him, "What have you given us, sir?", responded, "A republic if you can keep it." While the attempted destruction of America has been in the works since the founding, we've seen it gathering speed at an exponential rate over the past two years. All of us, including this panel of elected officials, were surely taken by surprise at the rapid onslaught of events destroying our God-given liberties beginning with COVID in 2020. In Federalist Number 33, Thomas Jefferson said, "If a nation expects to be ignorant and free in a state of civilization, it expects what never was and never will be." Another Jefferson quote, "The price of freedom is eternal vigilance," rings loud and clearly true in 2022. Mojave County Board of Supervisors, from today forward, each of you has the opportunity and responsibility to make thoughtful, educated, constitutionally sound decisions that affect all of us, including you, your children and grandchildren. This means avoiding contracts and grants with socialist language and intent. Nowhere in our Constitution do we find references to agency powers or words and phrases such as climate equity, sustainability, social justice and equitable outcome. When you see this, please turn tail and run. John Adams once warned, "A constitution of government once changed from freedom can never be restored. Liberty once lost is lost forever." And lastly, please keep in your hearts the brilliant words of Alexander Hamilton, "The sacred rites of mankind are not to be rummaged for among old parchments and musty records. They are written, as with a sunbeam, in the whole volume of human nature, by the hand of the divinity itself, and can never be erased or obscured by mortal power." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Scotty McClure.
I haven't been up here in a while, and I've kind of given up on asking for the newspapers thing to get straightened out, I've given up on that. The TV, until I get more information, I can't go after whoever's running that department anymore. Yeah, they added a new channel called Story, another PBS crap. They have shown in the first month about 20 to 30 times, one hour, about eight off Hitler. I think there's, let's do the whole story instead of this, you know, bullshit. You took away our, you've taken away some channels here in the last six months. And of course, we can't fight Fox or CBS or whatever, back in New York City, they make the rules even though it's FCC. And I've noticed here lately that this emergency, weekly emergency alert system, you guys have to do that. I thought it was somebody over in the 911 department, at the Sheriff's Department, pressed a button and that came on for a minute. Wiped out everything on all the channels, okay. You used to do it at 4, 5, or 6, or 8 o'clock in the morning. Now you're doing it at 8:15 last night, and you've moved it, why move it to when I've got a football game on, the Oscars, or some movie, I was watching a movie, and it cuts right into it and blacks it out. You don't get the Oscars back, you don't get the football game back when it's fourth quarter. Why did you move it? Just pressing a button in the morning, or I'd rather do it, I'd rather wipe out the news because I'm going to watch it anyway again, whatever. Too lazy to get up and out of bed, I just watch a movie. Now, I thought this dollar bill was, this note is legal tender for all debts, public and private. Now, I have a storage unit down in Fort Mojave, they just sold it and bought it for $7 million. And I can no longer pay cash, I can no longer give them money, I have to go buy a money order. And come July 1, I am going to have to give them my bank account number, and I'm not doing that. They're going to either kick me out and sell my stuff at auction within 60 days. I, and they're out of Tennessee, and, yeah, $7 million, that's the one on Camino, Colorado. It's worth it. I mean, that place rakes in the money. And I've been living there, well, not living there, excuse me, renting there since quite a few years, five, six years, and I've never been late on my payments, I can't get money anymore. I have to go down and spend more money, $1.50 a money order. It's the point of it. This is worthless, well, legit cryptocurrency going here.
Thank you, sir. Approve a proclamation declaring May 2022 Older Americans Month.
Finally, one for me, for us, right? Motion to approve.
Second.
I was going to suggest that Buster should have the second on this because I think he outranks us all.
Heard that motion and second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Consent Agenda. The following items listed under Consent Agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Bishop, anything to remove?
I do not.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing this morning, thank you.
Supervisor Johnson?
Nothing, sir.
Supervisor Linganfelter?
Nothing, sir.
Oh, but I've got to pull number 15.
Make a motion to approve Consent 5 through 27 minus 15.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 15. So it looks like Mr. Lotosky.
Good morning, Chairman Gould, members of the board. This item considers the board's approval to extinguish a public ingress and egress easement as well as a couple of public utility easements in the Santa Fe Ranchos subdivision. This is a petition that has been signed by four adjacent property owners. They have presented to staff some reasoning with regard to, you know, just general OHV use of that spur drive, namely, and I will say that Public Works has been involved because this is a public ingress and egress. We consider it the same as a public right of way. We have had a couple of issues in the past with regard to a gate being erected across spur drive. We've taken the necessary actions and had that gate reopened on a couple of occasions, and now we see the application for extinguishment. Staff is indifferent to making a recommendation on this matter. Generally, we would only recommend a denial if there was a stakeholder such as a public utility or safe flight control that had an objection to this, or of course, and this is per state law, if legal access were severed. That is not the case in this instance, but in your backup, you do have a letter from the Santa Fe Ranchos Property Owners Association, which disagrees with this action.
Questions for Mr. Lotosky. Mr. Lotosky, does a, a public easement become a, when it's extinguished, does it become a private easement?
No, it would not, unless there were some special considerations attached to the extinguishment. It would literally, the public easement would just go away, and the property owner would enjoy that space once again for their own personal use.
Thank you, sir. Let's see, so I have some people from the public that wish to speak. Carol Wilk.
Carol Wilk, 542 Harvard Court in Kingman. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Santa Fe Ranch Property Owners Association. I'm currently in charge of the road maintenance and coordinating with the grader to maintain the roads in that area. You'll be hearing from two other of my colleagues in regards to the very bad precedents this may set for our, our association. I do want to let you know that from the standpoint of grading the roads, a precedent like this, if other members of the association decided they wanted to start gating off portions of the community and were allowed to do that, would cause quite a bit of additional cost to us as we would have to rearrange our entire road maintenance plan annually. As you can imagine, that's a very large area out there. We spend considerable amount of time and money maintaining those roads and coordinating how far and in which directions the grader has to go. If he has to start stopping and going around areas like this, it increases the cost for us to grade that area, and it basically just disrupts the entire process for us. We're also against it because it's a first step for the person that began this, which is Mr. Ben Peterson, and what he has stated to us is an attempt to disband the Property Owners Association, and that is very troubling to the community. We would hope that you would support the association's plea to very much vote this down and allow us to continue business in the way that we've been doing business for the last 20 years. We have a lot of plans on the horizon for really positive development in that area, and you'll be hearing more from us in the future, we're very excited about that. We're very excited to work with the board and the commissions and the county on that in general. So we would hope that you will please vote no on this and allow us to continue to develop our community. Thank you.
Big questions for Ms. Wilk? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mike Servilla.
I'm past president of the association. This conversation with Mr. Peterson started last year sometime, early last- This conversation with Mr. Peterson started last year sometime, early last year, when he first put up his gate. And Mr. Peterson and I rode motorcycles together, so I know him personally. And so I went to talk to him about the gate. And I said, look, you know, the association is going to fight you over this. We, we want to keep our roads together. As Carol was stating, you know, that changes our whole boundaries when that happens. And if all the dead end roads, which, which we have lots of in our association were to do this, our association would end up falling apart. It would not be feasible anymore. The money would not be there to grade these roads. We do that for $145 a year. And we have 2,700 property owners and over 500 miles of road. In discussing this with Mr. Peterson, I asked him, I said, what is your, what is your end result? What do you want to do here? And he says, well, he says, first I want the association to go away and this is how I'm going to do it. And that's a quote, by the way. He doesn't believe that any government is good, whether it be on a local level, or a county level, or a state level, or federal level. And he believes that he should be able to maintain his own roads. So I asked him, I said, who's going to maintain the roads if the association goes away? He says, well, everybody will maintain their own road. We have miles of ingress egress roads that the county put together for us when we did the subdivision. Somebody's got to maintain that. If we go away, they're going to come to you guys to do it. And you don't have the legal right to spend money on roads out there. So I believe that this would totally weaken our association and our ability to maintain our roads. And I think that it's an attack against the community and the lifestyle that we bought into. And I appreciate it if you would deny this. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Servillo?
Sorry.
Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Rob Hooper?
Good morning. For the record, my name is Robert Hooper. I live at 19930 South Diamondback Road at, on Stagecoach Trails in Yucca. And I am the president of the Property Owners Association. And I'm here representing both that association and myself. But I want to let you know that on April 18th, we had a, a board meeting and we put this to question. And we had a unanimous vote against it from the board. And we put it for public comment and we had 100% opposition from the other property owners that were in attendance at that meeting for the very reasons that Mr. Servillo gave. I might also want to point out that each of the phases of the ranch when they were put together, there was a documented agreement put together by the developer with county approval that the, the POA would be formed primarily for the purpose of maintenance of the roads. We first found out about this situation with the gate that Mr. Peterson put up when our grader called and said, I can't get through. So that's a concern to us. Secondly, because this would wipe out the utilities as well, if the ranch ever did grow to the place where utilities had to cross that right of way, we would no longer be able to do that. So for many, many reasons, we'd like to ask you to, to deny this. Thank you so much for your time.
Questions for Mr. Hooper? Hearing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is the applicant, Mr. Peterson, here today? Okay. Just going to give him the opportunity to speak. I'm going to move that we deny item 15.
Sorry.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The eyes appear to have it, do have it, so Item 28. Is a public hearing? I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for item 28. Is there anyone here wishes to testify on item 28? Hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on item 28. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion?
Chairman Gould?
Supervisor Langenfelter?
Thank you. I'd like to ask Director Walsh to come up to the podium if you could.
Tim, my only question on this is, why go the route of a special use permit instead of just rezoning it to do what they want?
So the, the property is already zoned C2, general commercial. The, the special use permit allows them to, to then place the RV park there.
Is it going to be mixed use or what?
The proposal we've got is just for the, the RV park. So this, the special use permit would allow them to then place that RV park there.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. So we're back. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, we did.
In a second. You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 29 is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone here to testify on item 29? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing on item 29. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould?
Supervisor Langenfelter?
Like to motion to approve BOSS Resolution 2022-080.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Is there any further discussion?
Um, yes. You said item 29, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 30 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to testify on item 30? Looks like I've got one here. David White?
Chairman Gould, I believe Mr. White is the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Because, you know.
It's Daniel White and I'm just here to encourage the approval of the item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to testify on item 30? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing on item 30. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould, motion to approve.
I don't.
You've heard that motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 31 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 31. Anyone here to testify on item 31? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing on item 31. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould?
Supervisor Bishop?
I'll make a motion to approve, to allow for a glamping site in White Hills. Right hill do you stay at one of those? A glamping site?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Motion to approve.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 32 is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to testify on item 32? Hearing none. I'm going to close the public hearing on item 32. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould?
Supervisor Bishop?
I will make a motion to approve BOSS Resolution 2022-083 as written.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The eyes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 33 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item Viola, I can't read Hefner. Come on down. You know, before, let's see, this came out of Development Services. Why don't we have them come down and explain what they're doing here and then I'll have you come back up? So if you want to take a close seat, you won't have to walk all the way back.
Morning, Chairman Gould, supervisors. This item here is related to Jim Acres. Jim Acres was created sometime back, I believe in the 60s and was recorded. No real development has gone on out there since that time. At the time of recording, it was recorded on a plat with names assigned on that plat. However, that process at the time did not go through the county's addressing policies and that. So it was recorded at the time. However, no development has really gone on out there. Recently, we've had some requests to issue addresses. In looking at the roads that were recorded as part of that plat in the 60s, it was found that those roads are already used in other places and did not meet our, our road naming requirements as part of our zoning ordinance. With that, the department proposed certain names to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed those names and actually selected additional names. And those names that the Planning and Zoning Commission selected are being presented to the board for approval. And basically, once those are approved, then, or whatever names really that the, the board wishes to, to assign, we would then proceed with that and allow for the development at that subdivision.
So Mr. Walsh, this is the only area in the county that has duplication of names?
Chairman Gould, no. There are, these roads actually have been duplicated a number of times, and which is why they, they do not meet the road naming criteria that we have established in the zoning ordinance. Therefore, in order to move forward, basically, we, we suggested different names that do meet our, our road naming criteria in order to, the, the road naming criteria goes through a number of things, one of them being 911, but also a number of other criteria in order to discourage multiple duplications and confusion that way.
The problem is they named these streets a year after I was born.
And that is actually...
So the property owners out there have used these names for their property since the year after I was born.
Chairman Gould, actually, the, the properties have not used these street names. And that's actually what's come up right now is, is they're wishing to, to acquire addresses right now. And in acquiring those addresses, the names are just beginning to start to being used. And that's what, what's brought this issue to light.
Well, they were, the properties are tagged with those street names. So when they drive down the, the one street to get to the next street to get to the street that they're on the property on, they're using those as, as a means of direction to get there.
In, with this, with this specific subdivision, no streets are currently signed. They're, the streets are at best, you know, two lane roads. They're not county maintained roads. So currently, they, they've, the, the best description for these properties has been a legal description, Jim Acres, block this, lot that, or the assessor's parcel number has been how they, they've been identified today.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Walsh? Supervisor Bishop?
Tim, is it possible that we could leave these roads named with, with the name they have now and maybe put Boulevard after them or some kind of an identifier that's unique to Yucca, but would keep the main name on the, on the maps?
The, the current names don't match our, our road naming convention, our road naming procedures, policies, our, our ordinance that we've got. Therefore, rather than to continue with that confusion, basically, other names have been proposed to, to replace those names.
And what are some of the other names that are proposed?
So the names that are proposed are, let's see.
Here in line, this is the second attempt at naming them. The other names were Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
So if I may, this isn't the first time that, that we've run into these types of issues. And in the past, what we've done is, is when this has come up, basically, we turn to staff and, and try and come up with names that have, or that could replace those that meet the naming convention as supervisor, or as Chairman Gould has alluded to. One of the names that was proposed were, were those, those days of the week. The commission felt that they didn't want to go that direction. So they actually recommended Obsidian, Petrified Wood, Azureite, Yucca Flower, Desert Senna, Rose Health, Rose Heath, and Sand Rock, basically as, as replacements for these roads.
Okay, so we have a, a street in Kingman, Golden Valley, and Jim Acres that are all yavapai. So even if we did away with, with yavapai, would still have two competing locations. Yeah.
Chairman Gould?
There's got to be a way to identify these on the 911 system so that it's not confusing.
And that's, the 911 is just part of the, of the issue. Basically, we have a, a road naming convention that, that basically goes through the, the different requirements. And part of it was because they, these names that are existing, or that were initially recorded, have been used a number of times. They don't meet that naming convention to be able to be used again at this location. As has been mentioned, it was recorded on this plat, but they have not officially, it was recorded on the plat, but they've not officially been accepted by the county as these names. So in a sense, these names have not actually been placed on these streets. They've been recorded as part of that plat, but not officially accepted by the county as that.
I think the roads ought to be named after each one of the staff up here behind the Diaz, so that people remember who did this.
I'd be happy to, to move forward if that's the direction of the board.
Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Langenfelter's in front. Supervisor Langenfelter?
Thank you. Tim, something that nobody's mentioned yet. Did staff reach out to the US Postal Service on this? Because as far as I can tell, if you have the same name in Bullhead and Kingman or Yucca, or, I mean, they, they all have different zip codes. So that's the primary differentiator is the zip code, right?
That's true.
Have you reached out to the US Postal Service to see if they're okay with it? Because it sounds like you're trying to change the names because of mailing purposes.
I don't know specifically that we've spoken with the US Postal Service on this.
There's no mail delivery in...
And that's, at this point, yeah, there's, there's not been any mail delivery to these sites. I think for the most part in this area, it is a post office box.
But you're saying that there's residents that are out there now that are looking to get mail to their residents? Is that what you're...
So the, we're, we're starting to see requests for permit applications in this area. And part of that permitting process is to receive a, a address. So in, in receiving those applications for development out here, we, we looked at it and these roads have not been formally accepted by the county in that area. And in order to establish that, we, we took the names that were originally recorded on the plat and, and tried to run them through the process and found that, that they wouldn't apply.
It sounds to me, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just a county policy thing. I mean, if you're trying to establish for the first time ever mailing addresses, it sounds to me like the first thing you would do is try to coordinate that with the US Postal Service because they're the ones that are going to be delivering the mail. And there's three separate zip codes or more than three separate zip codes, right? So it's not like it's new to them. I just, I don't understand the issue.
See if I can't get a little assistance from Mr. Holtry.
To the rescue.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just real quick, if a new subdivision came into the county and was requesting names, sorry, they would submit names to our department and we would go through those names and apply them to our zoning ordinance. And we would look at whether or not they meet that specific criteria. And if they did not, then we would say, no, you can't have these names. Essentially, that's what this Jim Acres is doing. Because they, they currently do not have road names in Jim Acres, they're having to essentially apply for road names. And the current names that were on the plat do not meet our criteria. So we can't go forward with them. And that's the, the purpose of essentially naming these roads. I don't know if that helps.
Chairman Gould?
Supervisor Bishop?
Scott, I have a question.
Scott, I have a question. We have this plot map in front of us that's dated 1960, '61. It does have road names on it. It looks like it's got a seal on it. It was put together by a registered civil engineer, it appears.
Correct. Mr. Chair, Supervisor Bishop, so that was recorded in 1961, where the, those names were never accepted by the county. They were just placed on the plat that was recorded. Since that time, several other subdivisions have come in, other road names have come in that have used those names that have been accepted and approved by the county.
Okay.
So those names were never really accepted, and instead of calling it a renaming, it should be naming. We're naming these roads. And to formally name them, we have to go by what our zoning ordinance requires. It requires that it can't, we can't continue to rename the same road throughout the county. So if a new subdivision came in and requested these exact same names, we would say no. And so as developers are coming in and are trying to start developing these properties, which currently, I believe, only two of the roads within Jim Acres are actually graded or have been cut in. All the other roads aren't even really existing. But now that individuals are coming in and they're looking to develop their properties, we're having to assign an address to that name, and in our system, we don't have any approved county road name, and therefore, we're having to go through a naming process. And where we can't use these names because of our zoning ordinance, we're having to come to the board with proposed names, or whatever names that you guys would like to place on them.
Okay, so I understand much, much better now. And we have records going back to 1961 at board meetings that verify that this was never accepted by the board. So are there any of these road names that are not duplicates that could remain?
Yeah. Supervisor, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Bishop, there are three names that are going to remain, and I'm blanking on the three of them. Those three names aren't changing, and it's only seven roads out of the, I believe, 10 that are changing.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You say when we accepted this plat, we didn't accept the names. I've never seen an exclusion on any plat that we've ever accepted saying, oh, by the way, we're not accepting your naming. When did you start your naming committee here on the planning and zoning?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Johnson, I'm not exactly sure when. I know the addressing and road naming portion of our ordinance has been in there for quite some time. But I do know that there is an official process when we do accept road names. A lot of times, it's when we are accepting the final plat of a subdivision. Or a lot of the names that have been placed on a plat prior to the approval of the supervisors, they'd come back in and got those names named after the fact. And I'm not sure how that process has happened in the past. Our addressing coordinator is the one that found this issue. We have a few other subdivisions in the county that have the same issue, that the road names never have been accepted by the county. There is a process. I'd have to check with our addressing coordinator how she found out that this subdivision didn't have those names.
Well, I would, I mean, from my opinion, when we accept the plat, we accept the whole plat with the names on it. And I'm guessing that you, that the county started this naming process after '61. So when we started it, we should have gone back in to build a database, putting all the roads that we had in the county into that system. Now you're covering, what, 60 years later, and we want to have, you know, a renaming of the streets? I don't, I don't even know why this is in front of the board, to tell you the truth. I don't see any reason to rename it myself. Thank you.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. Scott, thanks for your testimony this morning. I'm of the opinion that a developer should really be able to name the streets whatever the heck they want. I don't think the county should be in the business of telling people what they should name their streets, as long as the U.S. Postal Service can service those addresses. That's really, in my, in my view. I mean, the county doesn't deliver the mail, and if there's ever a county notice that needs to be sent through the mail, as long as the post office can service that address, then I don't understand why it would really matter to the county.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, I would completely agree. The whole reason why we're going through this process, I believe, is that our zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily allow staff to say, yes, you can keep these names. So we have to, we came up with some additional names. The commission recommended other names. I believe the board could come forward and say, hey, we want these names, or for it to keep the, stay the same. Our zoning ordinance just doesn't allow staff to say, yes, you can have, keep these names, is from my understanding.
And Scott, my last question is, as part of the ordinance right now, it seems common sense to me, but does the county, when you get requests, do you reach out to the Postal Service, coordinate with them to say, hey, can you service these addresses?
Absolutely, yeah.
Do. So that's already happening, and did they say that they can?
I don't believe they said that they could not service these addresses, because currently they don't have addresses. They don't have street names, so-
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop.
Chairman Gould, could I call Dean McKee up and ask him a question about the 911 system?
Sure.
I know you've spent a number of hours in the dispatch center of the sheriff's office. How does this work? Someone calls 911 from a community? Is that community identified, as well as a GPS location?
It is, as well as the street number and street address.
Okay, so the deputies now have computers in their vehicle. I'm assuming they have GPS mapping that takes them to the location of the call?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you see any problem with duplicate streets in various communities?
I don't. We come across that quite frequently. Again, like you said, the way our system is set up, it plots it right on the map.
Okay. That's all. Thanks.
We've got a couple of members of the public that wanted to testify in this. Viola Hefner. Viola, you want to come back up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Viola Hefner, and I am 42% Native American. And I feel that, because I have brown eyes, I mean, I don't feel like somebody should come up and tell me, you know, that I need to change the color of my eyes to green, or black, or blue, or what color. Okay? And in regards to Jim Acres, I have a map before me that you guys have, and I feel that I respect the, I respect you, I respect the board, planning and zoning, and I respect the forefathers. They did their work the best they could. And I feel that these street names are on there, and they're legal, according to the note there in April the 4th of '61, 30 minutes past 10 o'clock. So if we're not supposed to trust you, or trust our forefathers, who are we supposed to trust that comes up and has a handy pen, you know, ready to change everything? The color of my eyes, the color of my skin, where I reside? Yes, the streets do not have street names. I mean, they have street names, but they don't have the street signs on there. As a matter of fact, today or later on, I'm going to go to the other department, I think it's on Sunshine, where I can talk to somebody about grading the streets, because there's a lot of growth in there. But anyway, I oppose to this name-changing, especially when it started out Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Felt that this was a carnival, and I mean, it was so funny, yeah? Where are the clowns? So anyway, I ask for your opposition on this. Now, thank you very much.
And you own several parcels in that development, don't you?
I own 12 acres, yes. I own 12 acres, and they are right there on the top, between Paiute Drive and Navajo. I am from the Apache tribe, Mascolero, and I'm also part Cherokee. So I'm not putting all that, but I respect my forefathers like I respect everybody else here. And I think we should all respect our forefathers that did this work back in '61 in planning and zoning. We learn from everybody. We all need each one, you know? We all have to have a shoulder, you know, to cry on. So I need your help on this, too. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
Questions for Viola? Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Kenny Works.
Kenny Works, Yucca, Arizona. I've been to several of the planning and zoning meetings where this was, has been discussed, and there was never really a complete follow-through on why the reason for the name change was there. And from what I've heard today, I don't see why they should change it. This developer named these roads, the county recorded it, the person purchased the roads because of the names. She's Native American, and they're Native American names. She's proud of it, she wants to keep it that way. There's several developments out in that general area that have been plotted out and recorded. However, the only access has been through utility easements, and that's been causing problems, because people have been blocking off the easements going through their property. So people can no longer travel through them. How about some follow-up by the county to make sure that these roads are actually graded through and signed? There's, as far as I know, there's no process for this follow-up, because there's a big mess out there right now. People are building, doing improvements on their property that aren't on their property. They're on, they thought it was a road, but it turned out to be a utility easement and not a road. They got a lot of money invested in that. But there needs to be better follow-up on the county, on these plot maps that come out, and go out there and make sure that they're followed through on. Thank you very much.
So I'm going to move that we, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to make a motion that we not withstand our zoning ordinance and allow the continued use of the existing names in this area.
Second.
For that motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 34 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 34. Do you have anybody that wants to testify on item 34? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 34. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 35 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone here to testify on item 35? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 35. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 36 is a public hearing. Open the public hearing on item 36. Anyone here to testify on item 36? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 36. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'll make the motion that we approve BOS Resolution 2022-087, a rescission of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2003-454, as amended by Resolution 2004-537.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 37 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 37. Anyone here to testify on item 37? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on item 37. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 2022-088, a rescission of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2003-453, as amended by Resolution 2004-536.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. That was 37, clerk. Item 38 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 38. Anyone here to testify on item 38? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on item 38. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2022-089, a rescission of BOS Resolution 1992-194, and repeal the mechanical area plan.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 39 is a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 39. Anyone here to testify on item 39? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 39. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 40 is not a public hearing. Sitting as the Board Directors of Mojave County Flood? I guess it is. It's just moved over. Item 40 is a public hearing. Anyone here to testify on item 40? I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone care to testify? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 41. Mr. Walsh.
Chairman Gould, Supervisors, item 41 is the continuance of the solar energy overlay zone for the Griffith vicinity. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Walsh. Hearing none. Thank you, sir. We've got some members of the public that want to testify. Sam Colmoni. Is that your name?
No, Colmoni.
Colmoni, okay.
Not too bad. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to thank the board for hearing the good, tax-paying landowners of Golden Valley, hearing all of our concerns with dust control, residential fencing, paving of Sacramento Road, the impact of the animals living in the area, also the main concern of this board, to which is what is all of this power being generated for 550 megawatts? The good residents of Golden Valley appreciate the board coming to this question. Indeed, this is a very important question that needs to be addressed. This land is being- This land is being looked at as if it doesn't have many options on uses, but it could be football fields, soccer fields, volleyball fields, et cetera, something that could benefit the good community of Golden Valley and more suitable for residential sections in its surrounding areas. We are not against progress or solar. This is just, this does, this just doesn't suit this residential section. There are more suitable lands to the east and south in, in this industrial corridor. Once again, thank you to the board.
Questions for the testifier?
I have a question.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'm just curious, do you have partial numbers for the lands to the east and south that you think is better suited?
This, this is the, the land that's requesting to be, the section is requesting to be rezoned. This is the residential section that I'm in. I'm actually on this corner. My family is on this corner. We own 10 acres on this corner. We've owned it. My grandfather purchased it in 1970. All the orange sections are all residential two-acre plots. If I'm correct, I believe this section, this section, this green section, this green area, this green section has already been rezoned for the solar field and he's trying to get this in addition. So it appears to me that all of these sections to the east, there's many sections to the east towards the Yulipai Mountains that appear to be more suitable for industrial. There's a lot of, there are industrial properties already existing, businesses existing in that area, which is closer to I-40.
Are those properties for sale?
I'm sorry?
Are those properties for sale?
I can't answer that question.
Okay.
But there's, there's a lot of, it appears that there's a lot of vacant land in that area. Also to the, the south, there's a, the prison, there's an existing solar field, and there's tremendous amount of vacant land, more out in that area as well. That just, you know, all these orange sections are all cut out for residential. It just seems like it would be more suitable to me, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Kenny Works, Eca, Arizona. I've been going to the planning and zoning meetings and this has been discussed quite a bit. I, I have misgivings about the people who want to do this project. They don't want to disclose their sources. And I, I don't trust allowing anyone to come in the county and do business who do not disclose their sources and their purposes for the property usage that they're coming up with. I think it's better just to send all our solar farms down to, to Queen Creek and Maricopa County. They won't need all the water that way. Their properties will be all covered up with solar panels and people won't be able to live there. They'll have to come up here and buy residential property up here. I think that, that denying this, this special request by this one entity is, is appropriate move because they're not straightforward with the county. And I don't think that the county should be inviting businesses into the county that aren't not responsible or don't want to be responsible for their sources and their, their associations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I just purchased property up in this area and I'm not against the solar, but this is not as traditional solar. They're using mega battery packs. That said, I'd like to put up some things here. I'm highly trained in all these chemicals spills and the batteries that they're doing. At the current time, I'm also an OSHA rep on this stuff. These battery packs they're mentioning are very hazardous, very, very hazardous. If you've noticed, one little car, when it catches on fire, it'll burn down a whole house before they can put it out. I don't know if your fire marshal is here. I don't even know if they have the training for this. These things are unsafe when they catch on fire. This is not, you can't just spray water on it. You can't put foam on it. You literally have to smother it and put it out with blankets. That's how they put the electric cars out, to cover the whole car. That's one battery. These guys are talking mega batteries full of, that they can store it and sell this back to the, whoever it is they're trying to sell it to. There is no hazmat containment plan made by them, or at least I haven't.
Sir, do you know what type of batteries they're using?
Uh, it's same ones they're using in the other two plants that are already shut down because of safety over by Vegas.
Okay. So do you believe that these are the same batteries?
He said in the meeting last time what he was using.
Pardon me?
He said in his meeting last time when he was using the mega pack batteries. You, you specifically asked him, I think, what he was using. And he told you what size and how much power and everything.
Yeah, I don't remember that portion of the conversation.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the type of battery that he's planning to use.
Well nowadays, they only have one type of big batteries. And this, what it is, is they just stack the batteries. That's how, if you look on the internet, I have, I don't have time to show you all this, but I've done all the research. They're just stacked batteries and they keep hooking them together. They're like the, just like Tesla batteries. And they just, but instead of one battery, they stacking them to get what they need. That said, if he goes through this and puts it in and then he doesn't, and he walks away from it because he loses his money and all that and everything else, the county's going to have to clean these up. So if nothing else, he needs to put up a big bond for the cleanup if he walks away. Things like that, because this is not something that you just take and take your battery to the recycle center. This is a lot of money to clean this up. And if you approve it and he does put it in, and in five years from now, the technology is, it's going leaps and bounds and he no longer uses that technology, you're stuck with that, laying on the land and he can walk away, file bankruptcy and walk away. You're the one that's got to clean it up. Or at least we do as county residents. So until he can come up with a full plan of everything he's doing, his safety, his containment in case there is a fire, things like that, if nothing else, he needs to train your fire department on how to do it and pay for that. There's a lot of things that go on here with this system that he's trying to use. It's not just fed back into the system. Normally, solar panels are put in, power's fed back into the system, then the system takes care of it. That's not what he's wanting to do. He's wanting to store it for future use. When he does that, he's got to have the battery packs. That's where he adds in the safety and the storage problems and all the other stuff. I mean, you're supposed to have containment pads under these things, everything. And he's, he has no plan that I've seen them. And like I said, two of these plants currently, unless they've gone back online, are shut down over by Vegas right now, over in that area because of safety problems with the batteries. My biggest thing is, this is not something the county needs. You're not going to make any money off of it. You're not getting anything out of it. You're not even getting good taxes off of it because there's not, there's no way to charge them. You don't have anything in the system that says, okay, we get this much money for these solar panels or this. He's just going to give you land tax and that's it. And then when it doesn't work or the technology moves forward, you're stuck with the cleanup. Not to mention what it's going to do to the environment, all your animals, all your stuff that you have out there, the plants, the turtles, the, the donkeys, everything is going to be, because he's going to put a fence up. Soon as he puts that up, it stops them from going through there. It's just a lot of things going on here that people aren't asking questions about. And they think these questions need to go to him. He needs to come with a full plan before it's even discussed to change it. Thank you.
Questions for the testifier? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Annette Young.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Annette Young. We have parcel number 209-04-004. And I believe you guys know how I stand. We said no to this project last time being here. And we feel like along with a visual and a eyesore that this project will destroy anything living under the solar panels, as well as after the life of the solar panels and long after they're dismantled. I don't think that ground is going to come back for anything green or productive. At the last meeting, Mr. Fromm mentioned that my husband and I were asking over 600% of the value of our land, which offended me. We purchased our property high and that's okay, but we would never settle for a low value. We've worked way too hard for our money and don't want that money pulled out of our pocket by, you know, this, putting in a solar field and we are not able to sell it if we have to sell it. At the last meeting, I noticed that some of you board members were very concerned as to who was going to benefit from this massive power source. Mr. Fromm could not disclose to the members as he was under an NDA. My question is, after this last meeting with Mr. Fromm, did he meet with any board members or anybody here at the county to disclose who is getting all this power? And as Mike said, I just don't understand how it could even be considered or approved without full disclosure. As a tax-paying landowner, I'm sorry, within 300 feet of this project, shouldn't we know what's going on? Simple question that anybody who owns land or a house near this project is going to want to know. This is a quote, "Did you know that the desert tortoises call Mojave their home? Do they deserve to be killed off for a solar project? Population prior to the 20th century, the Mojave Desert was teeming with these desert dinosaurs. Tortoises have lived in the area for millions of years, even before it was a desert. Some locations were previously estimated to have as many as 1,000 of these individuals per square kilometer. But over the last 100 years, sadly, the desert tortoise population has crashed by 90% as roads, cities, and renewable energy developments have bloomed across the desert. Despite conservation efforts dating in 1970 and the Species Listed as Endangered Species Act in 1989, the desert tortoise population has continued to decline, which is very sad. The Mojave County is large and I don't understand why we want to shove this into our neighborhoods. As Mike said and Sam said, let's find someplace else, you know? When are we going to stop saying no to destroying Mother Earth for projects like this that don't even benefit Golden Valley? As you travel to Vegas, that's an eyesore. I have to ask everybody in this room, who wants this outside their front door or next door? And please, just wanted to mention that we're not opposed to growth in Golden Valley. You know, if it, if it's good for the community and it has support and infrastructure, I think that's fine. I mean, I'm happy to put it next door to myself, but not a solar field. Man is allowing this project, you know, while we destroy beautiful land around us, I would think anybody in this room who has kids, grandkids, or great-grandkids would want to leave Mother Earth, as beautiful as she was when we were all kids playing outside in the desert in the dirt.
Ma'am, if you can wrap it up, your time expired.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that and I, we want to say no to this project. Thank you so much.
Questions for the testifier? Hearing none. Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Gould, I just have a, a comment.
Sure.
I, I think what we're considering here today is a location of a solar field. The solar fields are coming. Unisource just put out an RFP that they don't have enough power to provide the good citizens of Golden Valley and other parts. So there's going to be solar fields. We need renewable energy. It's just a matter of where they're going to be. But they're, they're coming. Right now, Lake Powell and Lake Mead are dropping in elevation. They're not going to be able to provide power to various states. It's, it's becoming a really big concern across the country, especially in the Southwest. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Supervisor. Mr. Fromm, you care to testify?
Good morning, Derek Fromm, Greenstone. Thank you, Chairman members. I'm not quite sure in which order I would like to address some of the testifiers, but I just would like to, when it comes to location, I would like to maybe reemphasize and maybe very briefly go back over to, over a few slides. Here we have the subject parcel. And as you can see, it is smack in the middle of a significant confluence of washes and tributaries to the huge Sacramento wash. Therefore, that by itself has a real impact on the buildability for residential purposes of permanent structures, which has apparently nothing to do with the subdivision that occurred in the early 70s when some developers tried to sell small parcels to unwitting investors, mostly non-present investors. To be more precise, this is a larger view of the subject parcel. Again, show the FEMA flood zones. We have highlighted the parcel owned by Ms. Annette Young. And here's the parcel of Mr. Sam Colmoni, making that more visual. This is the parcel of Mrs. Young. We have met with and spoken to the two owners who actually live there and operate a business rather than Mrs. Young, who lives in Lake Havasun, has a parcel here for some future purpose. Equally importantly, and by the way, both owners here have welcomed our project with open arms and have offered their parcels for some use if we ever need it as part of our operation of the parcel. In terms of buildability and desirability, please be aware that some major gas pipelines run very close to Ms. Young's parcel. It may not be visible, but it's very present. Looking again at the area, the blue squares are parcels where the owners have, are delinquent in their property taxes, which is indicative of the fact that they are prepared to walk away from their investment. Very briefly, Mr. Colmoni's parcel is right in Zone A. Now importantly, we reach out, and this may not be very easy to see, but let me please try. Is there any way to make this larger? That is a overview of the Joy Lane area of the two solar parcels in Fort Mojave. And as a matter of fact, here is a 16-acre parcel that was acquired after the solar parcels were put in place. That's parcel number 22135001. The owner has indicated the following. When asked if the solar farms had any negative impact on his quiet enjoyment, if you will, of the parcel, pardon, the, maybe I will just read it to you. The short answer was, quote, "There has been no negative impact as I see it. As I am grading out lots of my property," that's the 16-acre parcel, "I have had many people stop and ask to purchase lots with both solar in plain sight." And that confirms information that we put in the record of very brisk real estate activity of parcels in the immediate view of these two existing solar parcels. Now lastly, we met in the last week with your assessors department to clarify whether Now, lastly, we met in the last week with your assessor's department to clarify whether there was any financial benefit to the county in terms of increasing your tax base as a result of the solar farm. And I believe we came to the consensus that although, as your assessor correctly pointed out, the underlying real estate itself is deemed to not be increased by the occurrence of solar panels on top, the actual solar panels or the whole system is business personal property, subject to regular property taxes in the county. So we will be contributing as a regular business to the tax revenue of the county. The only rebuttal I'd like to make to one of your testifiers is a reference, and I was actually thinking I was in the wrong hearing, because there was a lot of reference to mega packs of battery storage, none of which I'm aware was ever mentioned. And in fact, apart from not wishing to use those type of battery storage devices, there are no plans to put those at this particular location. And in any event, we have a different technology in mind and doesn't use what the testifier appears to refer to. But in any event, it sounded like he was referring to entirely different project, but I feel duty-bound to rebut the notion that we're putting dangerous chemicals in the environment by way of explosive battery storage devices, because we won't, and we particularly will not do that there.
Questions for Mr. Fromm. Supervisor Bishop.
I have a few questions based on comments from the public. You've already explained that you're not using these mega battery packs for storage. You've answered the comment that there's no tax revenue. There is equipment and buildings that will be taxed. Will the county be stuck with the cleanup if you are there for five years and then leave?
According to the Mojave County ordinance, as part of the building permit process, we will need to discuss with you the decommissioning at the end of the project life, and we will discuss with you at that appropriate time what is suitable, bond or security will be for the purpose of securing that there is money available, if you will, to restore the parcels to their original state at the end of the project. So all of that is part of, we won't get the building permit unless the county is satisfied.
Okay.
We intend to satisfy the county.
There were a couple of comments about environmental concerns and the fact that these solar panels will destroy anything that's beneath it. Is there any validity to that?
Not to my knowledge. In fact, in many instances, actually, a somewhat fenced-off area turns out to be refuge for small wildlife. Similarly, for, as far as tortoises are concerned, people will happily build a fence around their property without regard to whether that's good or bad for tortoises, and a solar farm is probably no different. We're happy to create some passageways so that tortoises might crawl space if they want to make their way across the parcel. We're very much pro-environment and pro-animal life, and therefore, it really is at no detriment to our project to accommodate animals to the best of our ability. So we'll do whatever works for the environment, because at the end, that's a major impetus for our project.
Okay. One of the comments were that there are safety issues with your project, fire concerns. Have you met with the Golden Valley Fire Department and worked out any kind of...
The Golden Valley Department, in fact, you may recall a few years back, in the context of the Fort Mojave solar applications, which was at the time that the first incidence of those battery pack explosions occurred, we met with the supervisor or the fire chief of surprise, and he undertook to help train the local first responders here. We will stand by that commitment, just for the solar parcel itself or the solar equipment, which to our knowledge is not combustible. And we already discussed that there won't be any lithium ion or similar chemical battery storage equipment on this particular subject parcel.
Okay. And then, I know that you and I met. Did you meet with other supervisors?
Yes, I did, ma'am.
Okay. Have you met with all five of us?
No, I haven't.
How many of us did you meet with?
Three, in person or by telephone.
Okay. So when you met with me, you made mention that you were considering applying for the RFP for Unisource and providing some of the energy that you'll be making to Unisource. Is that still a possibility that you're considering?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Lingefelter.
Chair McGold, thank you. Mr. Fromm, thank you for your testimony. I was one of the three that actually had the pleasure of speaking with you about this project. From the get-go, I always felt like we were only, and no disrespect by this, only getting half of the story. I mean, we're talking about the solar field, but with so much power being generated, I always had the question, and you testifying, saying you weren't going to need a power purchase agreement, and now you're saying that you're going to maybe throw your hat in the ring for Unisource's power purchase agreement. But before that, you testified you would not need that and that you had somebody that was perhaps lined up to consume all this power on an annual basis. So that really was curious to me. With regard to the Unisource RFP going out for a power purchase agreement, I know that this board has already approved the rezoning of, I'm not sure exactly how much it was, over 1,400 acres, I believe, for solar. Is that correct?
In that range.
So I think that regardless of what happens today with this land, that you and your business partners would be able to satisfy Unisource's process and call for a power purchase agreement with that land. The other thing that I think the public really needs to know is, you know, just the general category of use. And when we talked, we talked about a hydrogen fuels process. And in my research, you know, there's a significant amount of groundwater that's used as feedstock for hydrogen fuels. And I'm not sure that that's a right fit for Mojave County. It sounds speculative to me from all of the testimony that I've heard so far. I mean, we've had other speculative projects in this area. One most recent, I think, was called Pegasus that didn't end up happening. So I'm not inclined to really, I mean, it sounds like there's a whole lot more that we're not being told as far as the groundwater consumption for the industry that you're looking to bring in. So I'm not sure if you want to add anything to that, but that's kind of my thought.
Supervisor Lingefelter, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. One, as you may remember, because you will see a lot of development projects come and go, it ain't over till it's over. And therefore, it's a risky business for a developer because you've got to come in well before an opportunity is actually mature. Similarly, anyone who wants to come in today and potentially come up with a parcel that might be suitable for a response to Unisource probably might miss the boat because of the timing and the length of the process to get land zoned for specific purposes. In addition, it's a very competitive business. And when we first met with you and the county, there was no reference at all of a Unisource RFP. In fact, I believe that we've been around this county for over 11, 12 years, and it's never happened. So it might take another dozen years before they come back for a power requirement. And therefore, when we first started this process back last year, that was not even on the horizon. In fact, it was not even a consideration that they might be in need of power. And therefore, we were completely straightforward with you and the board and the county, and on a one-on-one basis regarding what we are intending to do. And the purpose is that when we mentioned that we don't need a, for our original plan, we don't need a PPA, that's because we intend to self-consume the energy we need. But because we need to run our operations 24/7, and the sun only shines on a good day eight hours, we need to make enough for the other 16 hours that we need to store so we can keep chugging along in whatever it is we do. We discussed privately at your request what it is we're aiming to achieve. I think we, I've sort of been entirely forthright in my communications about that. And it's not that we're hiding behind NDAs, but unfortunately, in the business world, in a competitive business world, with alternate providers of maybe a commodity solution, you can't just, you know, go and write it up in the newspaper. Equally for, let's call it, Pegasus-type of considerations, we felt it was best to say nothing or the least amount until it's happening. And we'd like to stick by that notion. Lastly, in terms of your comment regarding water use, what is, we obviously analyzed the Sacramento aquifer, and it's apparently 128 million acre-feet currently in storage, which currently is largely used for, to stimulate the power production by the Griffith Plant. In fact, the wells of the county were originally built for that purpose, for cooning water, processed water for the plant. And the water system runs literally across that area, and there's a specific industrial I-40 water system of the county to stimulate industrial use of water. We believe we fit that category. In terms of water usage, it is significantly less than the power plant's water use. We live in a connected world. We identified certain uses, usage for our output that would benefit the region immediately, particularly along the I-40. And we believe that from that point of view, our purpose fits what the I-40 industrial corridor has been set up for. But it needs to be fed by power because as is aptly demonstrated by Unisource looking for power, this is a bring-your-own-power industrial area. So unfortunately, we have to bring our own power, and we, our power, our water need is well, well, well below the currently available water that's already drilled by way of wells. And some of the wells that are yet to be opened up have a multitude of water in terms of gallons per minute available than what we will ever use.
Thank you for that. Do you know if Unisource has issued their RFP for that power purchase agreement yet? Is that on the, has Unisource issued their RFP for the power purchase agreement yet?
Yes, they have.
They have. How many megawatts of power are they looking to get?
They are looking for, they call it firm resource, which is kind of like a peaker plant or permanently available at all times of about 150 megawatts. And they are looking for 170 megawatts worth of solar power, or pardon, renewable energy, which in all likelihood, most likely will come from solar.
So you said 150 to 170 megawatts of power?
170 of renewables, 150 of baseload firm power.
So 170 new megawatts of...
320 megawatts in total.
320 megawatts. And how many acres does it take to produce 1 megawatt of power?
Depends on technology. I would say good guess is about 5. But actually, the power they need and that would be injected into the grid is less than the nominal capacity of the solar panels, because you lose power as you're converting it to the power you can inject to the grid. So you, there's a loss factor, if you will.
Got it.
In other words, our preference remains to stick the course and do what we really want to do, because that is a, that's self-serving, in a literal sense.
Sure.
And not competitive, because with RFPs, you never know. Literally, it's a race to the bottom, and you never know.
That's accurate. You know, I think with the previous zoning of the land that you have as solar, you know, I think that's 1,400 or 500 or 600, I forget exactly how much land that is, but I think that you're in a pretty good spot to put your hat in the ring for that Unisource RFP. And I wish you luck on that.
Unfortunately, that would be, we'd be robbing Peter to pay Paul, but one pocket is Peter and the other one is Paul. So we need all of the energy we can get to satisfy the county, because I think both projects are additive to the value of the county, also as a host to, you know, sustainable projects.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, from my position, I'm very supportive of you and your hopes for that Unisource RFP, but I don't know if the hydrogen fuels project is the right fit for Mojave County. That's just my opinion. That's all I have.
And we'll have to be pragmatic.
Supervisor Johnson, did you have questions?
Not others, gentlemen, but I do have some comments.
Okay. Further questions for Mr. Fromm. Supervisor Bishop.
Yes, I have a follow-up question. There was an email thread that was going around alluding to the fact that possibly you're involved with the Hive 1 project. I know in our conversation, you dispelled that rumor, but...
For the record, I could dispel that we know what it is. In fact, curiously, back in 2014, when we first applied for a rezone of the project that ended up being in Fort Mojave, at that very same hearing were the, you know, many generations back of the predecessors of the, what was then called the Sterling Solar Project. So they were at the same time looking for the first shot at solar overlay for the project where the Hive 1, in its current, in its current form, could be located, if it happens.
Okay. I know hydrogen energy is coming. It's the new and big way to make energy, and several companies are looking at that. And possibly your company, the Hive 1, possibly Naceral, so it's coming to Arizona and probably Mojave County, because we do have a lot of land available out here, and we do have lots of sunshine. So there's one other question I wanted to clarify. The RFP that Unisource has put out, if you are successful in getting this rezone and you are able to provide enough power for your needs, that's when you might consider selling power to Unisource if you have excess power, is what I thought I understood from our conversation.
We don't know how it all will shake out.
Exactly.
We truly do not, because they may want power north of Kingman, or maybe some wind provider in New Mexico has, you know, the next best deal. So I... So I cannot tell you where we are, other than that it looks like the Griffith area is at the energy heart of the county. And therefore, we believe that is a very good location because it would help your industrial endeavors from a strategic planning point of view. And it will actually help direct power either north to Kingman or potentially south to in the direction of Lake Havasu City. Because that is a city, in our opinion, in real jeopardy, given that they are entirely exposed to an islanded and cut off from the grid, if you will, and only connected to the grid by way of the water flow and the turbine capacity of the USBR turbines at Davis, Hoover Dam, Davis, and Parker Dam. And if the water level goes further down, they might not be able to, they have to choose water or energy. And therefore, we believe that the Griffith area might be highly suitable to protect the power needs of areas that are currently, you know, have a single failure, are in a single failure risk.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Fromm, who regulates solar plants with storage? As far as operation? Tells you what kind of safety requirements there are on battery banks and things like that?
Their national fire prevention rules.
So they would be the ones that would tell you what kind of containment you might need underneath for a given type of battery?
Well, first of all, we are not planning on using the type of battery that are risky. Secondly, we would not place them, and we had a very lengthy discussion in the early 2020 about that regarding the Boundary Cone proposed project that involved a lot of lithium-ion batteries, which was in the wrong location. And therefore, whatever we would do battery-wise, it will not be in the wrong location. And in fact, we would want to train and have been talking to your fire, the Golden Valley Fire District, about training them because we feel it's our duty as, let's call it experts, to help the first responders become experts. And we can't just send them into danger they don't understand. So we take that very seriously, and we would take pride in getting them up to the best in class for their own sake, for the protection of the project and the neighborhood. So we're very much in favor of training and uplifting the knowledge base of the county because solar and batteries are coming, and you need to be prepared.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions for Mr. Fromm? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Supervisor Johnson, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The idea that we're going to get rich off of personal property taxes is a fallacy. There is no way we're getting any, any kind of decent money off that at all. The state has lowered the personal property taxes to almost zero now. They're bringing up a good question on electricity, the availability of it in Mojave County. And the problem that we're facing is we don't have the lines to hold the power needs that we're going to have. You're replacing power, like the gentleman said, if the dam quits doing power, we'll have space available. But there's only so much space on those lines, and we're getting to a critical place in Mojave County's history where we cannot bring in new business, or is barely able to cover the, what we have now. That's all I had. I'm going to do the vote.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Johnson, that particular point, that was a very good comment you made regarding the capacity of the grid or the high-voltage transmission lines. And the attraction of the Unisource requirement is actually that it will stimulate the ability by people like ourselves to actually build the transmission line to be able to export larger amounts of power than the current grid could handle. In fact, you will have seen that Unisource itself just came out of a lineside committee session regarding the extension of the Golden Valley Power Line from Harris up to one of the mines north of, north of Kingman. And we believe there's a real opportunity to tag a transmission upgrade to the power production because we can make few hundred megawatts worth of power, but it's like during rush hour trying to get onto the highway in a Ferrari. It's parked, it's stopped. And therefore, this will trigger the need for transmission, and that is a very good thing for the county because that's what you're lacking.
Supervisor Ling and Felter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. Speaking with Unisource, I think they have plans regardless of vendors that win the RFPs for this area. I mean, I think Unisource is keenly aware that we need more capability in this area. And no matter who wins the RFP process, hopefully Mojave County will be a winner from that, from that process. Because once the power is in the transmission lines, you know, it goes wherever Unisource wants it to go. And I think that they, you know, at least in my district, in the industrial park and some of the highly concentrated industrial areas already where we have over 74 companies, they're, they have plans for future transmission upgrades.
But you will, you will remember that, for example, in recent years, one of the larger renewable energy resources for Unisource is actually located near Wilcox in Cochise Because they could, they could locate it here. And what you want is you want, you want them here.
Supervisor Bishop?
So I can confirm that Unisource is putting in a new substation at Mineral Park Road on Highway 93 and running a large KW line down Highway 93 through downtown Kingman and then down Route 66. So that's, that's in the process right now.
Thank you, Supervisor. What's the will of the board?
Chairman Gould?
Supervisor Bishop?
I guess I have to bite the bullet on this one since it's in my district. I'm very cautiously going to make a motion that we approve.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. It's ordered. Let's take a five-minute break.
Oh, thank goodness.
I'm gonna call our meeting back to order. So, we're on item forty-three?
Forty-two.
Oh, I curbled over that, interesting. Item forty-two. Mr. Walsh. What'd I get for taking notes on top of the paper?
Just give me one second here. Chairman Gould, Supervisors, good morning. Uh, this item, Steph is prepared, really to seek the Board's direction. Prior to nineteen ninety-eight, there were four billboards constructed up along the, in the scenic area, along the I-15 corridor. In ninety-eight, the zoning ordinance was amended to, uh, to prohibit any billboards along scenic vistas that were identified in the general plan. The general plan identifies I-15 as a scenic vista. So, from ninety-eight to two thousand and fifteen, billboards were prohibited in this area. In two thousand and fifteen, the Board exempted I-15 from that prohibited list. And then, beginning in two thousand and nineteen, the Department has received nine new applications for billboards in this area. Let's see, six of those have been denied with three being approved. With this increased interest in billboards in this area, and the percentage of those being denied as opposed to approved, Steph wanted to seek the Board's direction on whether the I-15 corridor should be removed from the exempted lists on the prohibited areas for billboards.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Walsh?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingandfelter.
Thank you, Tim, for putting this on the agenda. I've had, really, in every single one of the community meetings I have, I've had up in the scenic area, Beaver Dam, Little Field area, this issue has come up. And because the economy is, as far as development, is so good in that area, there's a lot of concerns with this. And a lot of, I think the majority of the residents, the citizens that I've spoken to up there are highly supportive of this, to put this section of roadway back into the scenic byway. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Walsh? Supervisor Bishop.
Do you have any other applications for billboards pending at this time?
I don't believe so in this area. Apparently, I do.
Yeah, maybe Kathy Tackett Hicks can tell us what she, what she has pending?
She signed, she signed, yeah.
Okay, okay. That was my only question.
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Walsh? Thank you, sir. Kathy Tackett Hicks.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, Supervisors. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I have a handful of projects up in the Colorado City area, and I didn't mean to say anything against you, Tim, but I want to remind the staff and this Board, I did, in fact, submit two billboard applications. A few months ago, you approved one of them for Mr. Black. It's a local businessman in the area. There was actually supposed to be two on that agenda. At the very last minute, literally the day or two before the meeting, staff called me and said, "We have an issue with the land use. It looks like you need to rezone that as well." We're gonna hold this and bring it to a future meeting, and I think it's coming up at the P&amp;Z for special use for the permit that was already approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, we do have one in the chute, and it wouldn't, they wouldn't trigger, but it triggers me. I'm very concerned about this request. I had the two billboard applications, the one that was approved, I did have, I think, eleven letters of opposition. It is a form letter that they went around in the little residential area. On the second one, which is gonna come before you, there are zero opposition. I hate to even say that now, because there is a handful of people in Colorado that try to drive these decisions. You have been clear that you have, people have said that's a problem. But I would honestly expect leadership to say seven billboards is not a problem. And I am out there working with you and people like you to bring business in, and if the first thing we do is put on these extra things and then say, "Guess what, you cannot advertise", there's gonna be a problem. I do not want to see this. I do not want to see this. I would also like to know if the extent of the I-15 is the full area, or if it's just a portion. It didn't say in the backup. The full thing? That's worrisome. It's very worrisome, because the last two years has been difficult for them, especially the existing business owners. But now, you know, we just brought in the TA. You know, we told him it was a good idea to help build a road? And then we can't turn around and say, "Guess what, ten miles down, you can't put a billboard." I absolutely do not agree with this. Seven billboards, it's not a proliferation? And I do want, I hope our leadership will tell them, it's not a proliferation. This is not too many. This Board has been very good about saying no. This is also not a problem of them somehow shanghaing, hiding the Board to get whatever they want. You've denied six. There is not a problem up there. And I would hope that you would not do that in this instance. I would hope that this doesn't, you know, get approved somehow, and then we have to come back and scramble with all the people that we're working with. Lastly, in this, I was not sure if the direction was to direct staff to go back and remove that from the sign ordinance, if that meant that you had approved this. There have been no public hearings on it. So I wanted to make sure I expressed my opposition at this time. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Supervisor Lingandfelter.
Tim, could you come back up, are you and your staff? Kathy raises a good question for the public. Could you describe the section of Interstate fifteen that this is a subject?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Lingandfelter. So, the section of I-15, basically through the Arizona portion, is what was previously included as a scenic vista. Where'd he go? Oh, he's, previously included as part of the scenic vistas, and what would be proposed as part of this as well. If I may, I think part of the confusion that, as of whether we had a billboard in process right now or not, was, I believe, one of, um, one of Kathy's projects is an on-premise site. So this is a sign for an exist, for a business?
There's two.
Okay, there's two. So, so, one of the signs that's being considered is an on-premise site. So that would be not considered a billboard, but it would be basically as part of that business, they would have their on-premise sign.
Is that the, the one that is currently still coming through the process?
Believe so, yes.
The on-premise sign is the one that's, that's still coming through the process, and it wouldn't be affected by this?
That's correct.
And then, as far as the travel center is concerned, aren't they gonna have, you know, like you see with travel centers, like a big pole and huge signage and gas prices and all that kind of stuff?
That's correct.
That's not affected by this, is it?
That would not be affected by this as well.
Is the Board of Supervisors able to set the effective date on this, just in case they're already in the pipeline right now? I mean, we don't want to cut them off at the knees mid-process.
Absolutely. I think, right now, it's set for, well, it's set for a thirty-day, but we'd be able to...
This is just a...
Oh, I'm sorry, this is setting the direction. So, so this is, thank you. So, this is directing staff to basically put this through the process. So if the, if the Board approves this today, we would then take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation, then bring it back to the Board. Similar to the item that we just had today with the Boards of Adjustment, staff, or the Board directed staff to consider reconfiguring the Boards of Adjustment. We took it back, took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of that change to the ordinance, and then brought it before the Board for the approval, for the final approval. This would be, follow that same process. So if the Board approves this today, it would then go to Planning and Zoning likely in June, and then get their recommendation. At the earliest, it would be back to the Board in July.
Great, thank you.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
So, the process we have now, which is, it comes before us and we make, you know, on, on individual, what, what's wrong with that? What is the problem with that?
Supervisor, Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus, there's no, no real problem with that. Just looking at the, the trend that's been going on, we basically wanted to get Board's direction. Having the last, let me see, we had nine, nine come in in the last couple of years, and three of those being approved, seeing that trend, we wanted to bring it to the Board and see what direction the Board wanted us to take. So there's no problem.
So with this, it would just be, there's gonna be no, no billboards at all? So, you know, we wouldn't even have the opportunity if there's some, you know, a real, a real good thing that needs to happen. So, I think that, I like it better to come before us and, and let's make decision, and, you know, it won't always be us, frankly. So, thanks.
Further questions for Mr. Walsh? Supervisor Bishop.
I don't have any questions for, for Tim, but I'd like to make a comment that, as a member of the traveling public, not being familiar with all the little communities along Interstate fifteen, when you're going from, from Nevada to Utah and parts beyond, you really have no indicator as to where to, where to get off. And I find billboards very helpful when I'm traveling long distances, being unfamiliar with the areas. So, I am not totally against billboards. I, I use them quite frequently when I, when I travel. So, you know, I, I think if we saturate an area with too many billboards, I mean, it doesn't make sense for a company to put billboards too close together, because at speeds of eighty-five miles an hour, you can't read them if they're too close together anyway. So I think we have spacing requirements anyway. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's five hundred feet.
Okay, so, so there's a limited number of billboards that could be placed anyway. Okay, that's all I have.
Chairman Gould. Supervisor Lingandfelter.
Tim, today, the, the only thing that this would do is, it would initiate a public process, a process for the residents that have issued this, or that have this concern to weigh in to planning and zoning. Is that right? And that's why I support this. I don't, I'm not against all billboards, but, I mean, when you get into conversations about what is a proliferation, what is not a proliferation, I mean, I think that the residents that actually live there, just like on all the other things that we've listened to today about road signs and all these other things, we're giving weight to the people that actually live there. By going through a public process to allow them to voice their comments, I think that's disrespectful, so...
And that's, Supervisor Lingandfelter, that is correct. This would just begin the process, it would initiate a public hearing, because ultimately, to move forward with this, it would be a revision to the zoning ordinance. So it would require a public hearing, both with planning and zoning, and then again, here with the Board.
Supervisor Angus.
Just for, for clarification, so right now, there's a process that, that citizens, residents can weigh in?
Yes.
Because it goes, when we, when we're, before we hear it, it goes through all that, that process?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus, that's correct. Basically, in order to have a billboard, a special use permit is required, which, which would be, which requires Board approval.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Lingandfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. Just to do right by the, the folks that I represent up there, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve sending this to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The nays appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Number forty-four. Did I? Ah dang. Forty-three. Mr. Lotosky.
Chairman Gould, members of the Board, this is merely an acknowledgement of a petition to bring a particular road in the Golden Valley area in for regular road maintenance, but this is just the acknowledgement to the petition. The petitioner would still have to move ahead and complete the subject roadway, improve it to prescribe county standards for future acceptance for regular road maintenance, which would be brought back to the Board.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Lotosky? Supervisor Bishop.
I make a motion to approve item number forty-three and refer this to the Public Works for evaluation. Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Item forty-four. Mr. Lotosky.
Chairman Gould, members of the Board, this is the same approach, an acknowledgement of a petition for regular road maintenance in the Golden Valley area. Just to give you some background, the reason why we like to bring these acknowledgements to your attention is, despite staff vetting the petition, making sure that it connects to an existing county roadway, we like to make you aware of this, just in case you have any questions, concerns, or if you would not support this moving forward, at least the petitioner or the entity planning to improve this road doesn't expend any of their own funds, and then find out later that the Board was not interested in taking this for maintenance. So again, this is just acknowledgement.
Questions for Mr. Lotosky? Hearing none.
Chairman Gould, motion to approve and refer to Public Works for staff evaluation?
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Number forty-five.
Chairman Gould, members of the Board, this is the same approach, an acknowledgement of a request or a maintenance, regular ma, road maintenance petition. This is in the Kingman area, however, you may know just off of Anson Smith Road, the, to the Kingman water tanks, this is for a section of White Cliffs Road connecting to Anson Smith Road, about six hundred and fifty feet.
Questions for Mr. Lotosky?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingandfelter.
Steve, I know that, that ADOT is planning a, a really large TEI project down at the west, or the Beale Street exit. Does the scope of this affect any of the area where they're doing their design work at all?
I have a working familiarity, I have to draw from some long-term memory on the TEI project, but this should be positioned far east of the TEI project.
All right, thanks.
On Anson Smith Road.
Thank you. Yep.
Chairman Gould, motion to approve?
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Number forty-six. Mr. Lotosky.
Chairman Gould, and members of the Board, in collaboration with the Office of District One, we put forward this request for the Board to approve one point five million dollars in District One FY twenty-two ARPA funds for a few projects benefiting the Colorado City Water System. This includes funds for water production, treatment, distribution, and distribution improvement projects. It will facilitate some new well constructions, water delivery pipeline upgrades, and water treatment plant upgrades.
Supervisor Lingandfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. Happy to see this project in front of us today. This project, or the several projects underneath this item are going to really benefit the city of Colorado City. I know that in the audience, we have Mayor Allred, and if it's all right with the Chair, I'd like to invite him down, just to, since he drove all the way down. If you want to say anything, Mayor Allred, we're certainly happy to have you here with us this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, it's a privilege for me to be here today. I know I don't get down here very often, but it's, it's always enjoyable to come and be here when I can, and we're very grateful for the opportunity to work with the county, and, and for the privilege to be able to do these projects, and they're very much needed. And it sure has been a pleasure to work with Supervisor Lingandfelter and all of you. I can answer any questions that you might have. Thanks for the opportunity.
You have questions for Mayor Allred? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down. Supervisor Lingandfelter.
Chairman Gould, I make a motion to approve?
Second. You've heard that motion, and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Item forty-seven, Supervisor Johnson.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I place this on the agenda. There was an invitation came out on January third, inviting one representative from the Board of Supervisors to attend this class. Did you receive an invitation, Mr. Chair?
I did not.
I guess that's the reason I was asking to have somebody come and do this. I think when we get our invitations, I'm not sure who from the Board would have wanted to go, but these need to be passed on to us to allow for us to either accept or decline, especially with, with the last meeting, we had a lot of discussion about elections and that sort of thing. I don't know if this class covered that, but man, it gives us a chance to at least meet people around the state, so I would just make a motion to have staff bring back a report at the next meeting.
Second.
You've heard that motion, and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so ordered. Number forty-eight, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, as you recall, the Board of Supervisors directed staff earlier this calendar year to search for a suitable site for the Mojave County Fairground. As a result, staff initiated the search process guided by the following criterias to consider and evaluate a suitable site. One was a central location related to the incorporated, as well as the unincorporated areas of Mojave County. Two was optimal access to that site, preferably already improved and or paved. Three, a large parcel or parcels sufficient to develop exhibitions, entertainment, and sport facilities, along with the obvious Mojave County Fair. Four is to have that site in, in close proximity to amenities such as power, water, and sewer. And last but not least, to acquire it with the least cost to the county and to the taxpayer. Additionally, as staff embarked on this process, staff was mindful that Mojave County needs a medical examiner facility, a morgue and another ward, and that the Board of Supervisors set aside three million dollars in the current fiscal year budget with the intent to build one. So with that in mind, staff expanded the search in pursuit of the most economical site, one that could potentially serve both. This concept, this approach, if doable, could save the county the cost to build transportation and utilities, infrastructure at two separate locations. One would be for the fairground, and the other would be for a medical examiner facility, and to build just one, set of infrastructure at this, at a given site. So, staff has completed that search, that task, and we're here today to inform you that it appears the I-40 corridor just west of Kingman provides the most suitable site, and that would be at the Sherrup exit. And if staff can, the map is already on the screen. So, looking at this site, Mr. Chairman and Board Members, you'll see there are three separate parcels. This site is less than ten miles west of Kingman along the I-40 corridor. The site is located along two county highways, those being Sherrup and Oatman Road. The site does contain, as I said, three large parcels. Add it up, they add up to over three hundred and fifty acres, which is more than four times the size of the current facility. It is reasonably close to power, and it's, to reasonable sources of water and sewer. It is reasonably close to power and it's to reasonable sources of water and sewer, or if the county was to develop and provide those on its own. The land within those parcels is federal land managed by the Bureau of Land Management. The land is designated already for recreation and public purpose, and we see a clear path forward should the board wish to go in that direction. So if the board does concur with this and approves this site for us to proceed, as you can see in the ask, our request is for you, the board, to authorize staff to proceed and submit those applications to BLM. As it stands, we would be asking for all three parcels, and furthermore, we would be asking the board to authorize staff to initiate and develop a master plan. We would not even think of any other activities at this time without coming up with a master plan that would create a path forward, that would contain a recreational, sports, exhibitions, and what is needed for each, what's appropriate, the location, how we fund those going forward, and so on. So what you would be, what we would be asking from you in the way of approval would be just a concurrence to say, we find the site perhaps suitable, we would proceed with the application and developing a master plan that you would see probably multiple times before you would approve it, and we would proceed accordingly. And, you know, as noted in the meetings that we've had with you, we, meaning the Financial Services Director of Mojave County and myself, we discussed potentially putting a seed or placing some funding in the next year, in the next fiscal year's budget for, to undertake that master plan. So we're here to answer any questions, to let you know that we've guided by your direction when we brought this item to the board earlier this year. We have completed that process, and we're here to get some additional direction from you. Thank you.
Questions for the County Manager. Supervisor Angus.
We heard from some people when this came out, and how far is this from Walnut Creek? Because we heard from a lot of people who seem to believe that this would really impact their way of life there.
Staff, if we can have that map back up, please. So, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus, the southern, as you look at these three map, as you look at them, there are three parcels. The one closest to Sherrup, to I-40, traffic interchange, is 160 acre. The southern boundaries of that 160 acre is a common boundary with a portion of the Walnut Creek subdivision. There are probably less than half a dozen homes that abuts to that southern boundaries, and there are some also commercial slash industrial businesses in the area, one along the east side. I think both are along the east side of that parcel, along the Sherrup Road. So as we plan, as we develop a master plan, we can be mindful of that, Supervisor Angus, and again, you will see whatever plan or strategy we come up with. But to answer your question directly, the southern boundary of that parcel is common with the northern boundary of the Walnut Creek subdivision.
Okay, and just to reiterate, there will be many, many times, if this goes through, you know, that people will be able to speak to it about how they believe it will impact them. This is just, we're just voting today so you guys can go put the, see if you can even get the land, basically.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Angus and the entire board, indeed, these types of projects take a long time to plan and deliver. We will need funding to plan it, to design it, and then to deliver it, and we would not be able to budget and/or spend without the board knowledge and approval, so we will be back in front of you multiple times.
Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. I think we all received several letters, all coming from residents in the Walnut Creek area, and in fact, it's five letters, and they all seem to have the same complaints. It's almost like, almost a form letter, but it's more personalized. So every one of these letters addressed issues with, there are concerns about environmental issues like noise pollution and the night skies being lit up, water consumption, and believe it or not, they're concerned about fast food odors. I guess french fries or...
Funnel cake.
Or funnel cake, Navajo bread. So I think you already cleared up the distance, but do you see any of these concerns that we need to address before we make a decision on noise and light and water consumption?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, and all board members, if I may once again, staff, can you put up that map, please? So, I'm an engineer by trade. I've worked on a lot of projects that take a long time to deliver, and you truly plan them in advance, and you identify impacts and you mitigate them. And I sincerely can tell you, I understand what identifying and mitigating is, so those would be taken into account, those concerns. Furthermore, you know, where we place certain activities within this 160 acre parcel has a lot to do with the, how we master plan it and where we place them. I wanted to, I didn't earlier, but let me do so now. The 110 acres north of the 160, which is also along Sherrup Road, that we envision to carve out an eight or 10 acre parcel that may be elongated in nature, where we can place a medical examiner facility, but not right along Sherrup, but further away from it, to sort of push it back and get it to where it's not as visible, and it's not as prominent, and we will put proper fencing around it and ventilation and so on. The 108 or 100-plus acres that is in green along that left of the map, that could serve for some, it could be horse racing, could be more sports racing, could be any of which. The reality is, the Bureau of Land Management wants to, has used that middle parcel for wild horse and burrow corral, and they intend to maintain it and use it going forward. So there are some activities out there. I don't think the Bureau would be consenting to us putting a set of improvements out there without them weighing in to identify what impacts and then to ensure that they're mitigated. So I really believe the master planning process will take care, and I trust that we will come back before you and the public will have the opportunity to weigh in, and the board will either approve, redirect, or deny what we're trying to do. But at this point, I think there is recognition or acknowledgement that the current site has many limitations and restrictions due to noise and lighting and residential area, and we just need, if indeed the board wishes to see us proceed with a relocation, we have to start somewhere.
Okay. Thank you very much, and you know, the same, at least one of these letters mentioned the fact that traffic's going to be a problem, and they mentioned we'll have people coming in, city drivers coming in from Kingman, Lake Havasu, Bullhead, and we'll have weekend warriors coming from California. And I think that's exactly why we're considering moving the fairgrounds to a more central location that's easier to access. So I don't think that was a positive, meant to be a positive, but I took it as a positive. And then I wanted to ask one of our members of the Sheriff's Office up there if they have any comments about what traffic issues they might see once this becomes the Mojave County Fairgrounds, how open range is going to play into the situation, and do you foresee any kind of an increase in crime for the surrounding neighborhoods? You can just say no.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Bishop.
Yes.
At this time, we have very limited information, so at this time, I don't have an opinion either way. I just don't know. This is the first I'm hearing of it. We haven't planned anything, obviously.
Okay.
And I'm sure we would be part of, you know, the County Manager's master plan, and we would be meeting with him ongoing and moving forward.
Okay, and I suspect if it becomes an issue with traffic, we could look at things like traffic light, or stop signs, or any number of traffic safety improvements.
Sure, and I'm sure the Public Works Director could probably answer more on that aspect.
Okay. Alrighty, that's all I have, Dean.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Bishop, the county roadway system is functionally classified into county highways, arterials, collectors, and residential roads, and the two roads out there that this facility would about to, are both county highways. And to that end, they are classified to carry traffic. Any improvements that would be needed for those facilities, and the, we will have to conduct a trip destination and generation study. We will identify what is needed additionally, whether it be in left turn lanes, right turn lanes, any additional improvements to the site, and those will be part of the improvements that will be recommended to the board. There is, today, I couldn't even tell you how much traffic you would have until we come to you and say, here's what we're proposing, and you say yea, yea, yea to this and nay to that. We would identify what type of traffic comes with each, and again, propose the proper improvements to accommodate them.
Okay, and then my final two questions, Sam, for you, is do you have any idea how long it will take to go through the process to obtain this property from BLM, and also to do a master plan, including what we might do with the existing fairgrounds? Do you have any kind of a timeline that you've got in your own?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bishop, the, let's start with the application to BLM. We would put that in as soon as the board gives us the approval. We anticipate a process of approximately 18 to 24 months, and that's simply because the Bureau of Land Management has already designated these parcels for recreational and public purpose. We could, depending on the progress that we're going through with the Bureau, wait a bit of time, could be 90 days or six months, and begin the master planning process, especially if there is no, if there are no fatal flaws or obstacles identified. But however, as far as the, so the process, let's just assume it's complete in 24 months. The master planning process could be on track to complete when we get the clearance from the Bureau to use this facility. Anything beyond that is truly in the board's hands, because you, you know, it will come to the implementation phase of that, the fund, the available funding, and so on. We could phase it in, get it ready for the Mojave County Fair in a given year, and then add facilities that will go along. We could master plan it and build it all at one time. We've seen both. We have been checking. There are some really great examples of other counties and other states that have done really fantastic facilities. In fact, we get excited about the potential of what this county can put in place going forward. We could have a truly a state-of-the-art facility that delivered at once or in phases, but all that will be planned and delivered with your approval. So I don't know, I hope I answered your question. Two years for the permit, we would do everything we can to work with the Bureau on the cultural, biological clearances and studies and surveys and so on, and then to complete the master planning. But we would not go to the master planning phase without coming back to the board to secure approval for that, and then we would engage you in that process.
Okay, so is it fair to say that it's going to take a couple of years, maybe up to five years, before we actually move the fairgrounds from the Kingman location to the new location? And then we would have a plan to dispose of the current fairgrounds properties and probably sell that at appraised value?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Bishop, I would think so. I would think it's safe to say three to five years. I would really hope that we would have it in place and well on its way while you are all here with us and making those decisions. I don't think we would do anything with the current site until the, all activities have successfully moved and up, or up and running, and then again, even at that point, it'd be up to the board to decide what we do with the current facility.
Thank you.
Supervisor Langenfelder.
Well, thank you, Chairman Gould. As far as the location is concerned, I think it's a good location. I think it's about essentially located in Mojave County as you can get. I mean, we do have communities that are on the other side of the Grand Canyon, so I'm glad to see that it's still going to be close to the county seat. I actually drove it, it's like four miles from the current location. Good climate, good proximity to transportation. All my other comments, I'll just wait for the general planning process, but I'm glad to see that motorsports is going to be a huge part of it. I think if you're going to try to have a facility that, at the very least, breaks even, you gotta have motorsports. And right now, we're having issues at the current place with animal circuses, motorsports events, top fuel vehicles, can't do much of that, so thank you.
Senator Lee Swirrath. Further questions for County Managers? Supervisor Angus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You tell me, we have, what, 15 fairgrounds in Arizona? What is the average size of a fairground facility? You know?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Johnson, I honestly don't have the answer, but will be more than happy to do some research and come back to you with that.
I know some of them are a section of land, 640 acres. I think the location they found is a good location. I mean, it's... I mean, it's, you can go both ways or all three ways to the cities. My personal opinion is we haven't done our job yet. Supervisor Lingefelter's talking about, he's glad to see they're having a motorsports facility. We all are. How big a facility is that? How much land do you need? How much land do we need for a rodeo? So I'm guessing we all want a rodeo and we all want a motorsports. Now what else do we want? You know, do we want, you know, RV hookups? Because that's a big, big money maker. We're trying to make this self-sufficient. We have to have area for the buildings that we have so they can be rented out. I think we need to have, and then put those things onto this land to say, okay, we need 40 acres for a rodeo, you know, because you got parking with that rodeo. And then if you have a car racing event, I don't know, maybe 20 acres, 30 acres, 40 acres, same thing, but you have to have parking for that and so they can go on at the same time. And then if you have pavilions, you know, for those things, the area for the amusement parks and the, I think we need to take, you know, little squares or whatever and say we, you know, a rodeo takes X amount of land, the racetrack takes this amount of land. I mean, if you have 640 acres, you can put a quarter-mile drag strip in, you know. I mean, there's a lot of things you could do, but we need to figure out what it is we want to put in there and then say, is, will this land accommodate it? And then, like, this land has wash on it, so could we even put, you know, say it was 40 acres, just throwing that figure out there, would it fit there? No, it won't even fit there. It's going to have to go someplace else. I think we need to decide what it is we're going to put into a fairgrounds. And it's much like all of us up here saying, well, let's build a house. And we go, we found a piece of land, then we find out that, you know, Jean wants a billboard on it so she can read it when she comes home and find her house, but, so we need more land because Jean wants extra things. But I think we need to figure out what it is we want on there and that, and the size of that, and then see if that'll fit here before we do a master plan, because how can they do a master plan when we haven't even said what we want, you know? That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, may I, I know Supervisor Angus is waiting for a question too. If I may just respond. I do appreciate Supervisor Johnson's perspective, in the most sincere way that I can say it, and we truly, so the only thing that I would say to that is, these three parcels add up to 375 acres that we could have access to. It may not be enough, but we really, as staff, perhaps at my fault, I wanted to make sure we really did not get too far ahead of ourselves before we got the board nod or concurrence or approval. So what Supervisor Johnson mentioned is absolutely necessary and legitimate and required, and we will do so. We may come back to you once we start the process and begin to put the pieces together. Motorsports, we will be reaching out. We have contact information for folks who are interested. We have, we made contact with some of the locals that use, you know, 4H and Kingsman and others, and we reached out to at least one or two of the motorsports and left messages and so on in the process of bringing this item to you. My point is, we do, we really agree. We need to do it. I just did not want us to get ahead of you in every reach out that we did. We said, the board is contemplating. We didn't say we're doing it. I just wanted to address that with you, and we understand it's part of the process and it's a must. Thank you.
Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. If we approve this today, how does that affect investments in the current fairgrounds going forward?
Mr. Chairman Gould, Supervisor Angus, we, we would, we would, through the board, communicate that this is a three-to-five-year process. If you recall, when the board approved the transition plan to bring the fairground operation back into county system, we did say we were going to make only the necessary improvements, and we were going to wait, we would make any improvements that were needed today and then in discussion with the board. If the board approves relocation, we would get a feel for what that timeframe is and make improvements only to last us through it. We would not want to make any investment into the current site. I hope I answered your question.
Chairman Gould. Supervisor Lingefelter.
A question to Manager Elters, and to build on Supervisor Johnson's point, I think that what he says has merit, and I would hope that, you know, we would diagnose what we need before we prescribe, for lack of a better term. And I know there's a whole section, 640 acres of state trust land that's close to Kingman. It's off of the, one of the new interchanges, and it's to the north. It's bordered by the Phase 2 of the Kingman Industrial Park on the left. It's, so I think on the north and the west, it's zoned or bordered by land that's zoned heavy industrial. To the south and the east, it's vacant land. So that's another, and that would be right off of the highway as well. Was that site evaluated? Knowing that it's going to take up to five years to relocate, I mean, that's 640 acres of contiguous Arizona State Trust property.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Lingefelter, we did not evaluate that. I will tell you though, one of the five characteristics that we evaluated was the least cost to acquire and obtain the land. And with state land, they are not interested in long leases. And furthermore, for the leases that they are interested in and do do, they will, they will appraise the land, and what they charge you for the lease is a percentage of the value of the land. So we, we truly thought the fact that this is federal land managed by the bureau and the county could acquire it for just the minimal cost for studies and surveys and so on, we leaned in that direction and brought you the recommendation or the site that we brought today.
I think if the needs assessment and what Supervisor Johnson was talking about, if it, that should drive the physical location, not the other way around. The physical location shouldn't drive what we can do, because I think we're already seeing that problem in the current facility where the physical footprint dictates to a large extent what we can and can't do. So hopefully, we're trying to get away with, away from something like that. And maybe, maybe you could look at that. You know, I'm sure there'll be more costs for state trust land, but I mean, if you're going to do something, do it right. That's kind of what I think.
Get a couple of members of the public that requested to speak. Scotty McClure.
Chairman Gould, if I could just make one quick comment.
Why, Scotty's coming to the podium.
Right. So anything west, Kingman or west of Kingman, I don't think this board should support because we're trying to draw in the other communities, and the distance to go even further, I don't think is attractive. So I think it should be east of Kingman, either Golden Valley, I-40, Golden Valley, Highway 68.
West.
Or west, yes, I'm sorry. So those are just my thoughts. I think it should be closer to Bullhead City and Lake Havasu.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you. Going along with that, well, I would want to see something go farther away from Havasu. It's still, you know, we're in the, in the 21st century where people travel, you know, hundreds of miles to get someplace. I think this is a one-time shot, one that we have at this to make the best we can for the county. It's going to be here for, like how long the fairgrounds has been here, so whether it's north of Kingman or south of Kingman or wherever it's located, it should be the best for what we can give our residents and the taxpayers and take our time to make sure that we have the right amount of land so that we don't build something and find out, gee, it would have been nice to have this or nice to have that, that was all.
Scotty, come on up.
Hey, God, how tall are you? I think you better listen to Mr. Johnson here. He's got some good ideas, and I make a motion that we appoint him to be in charge of this thing. You'll like that one. I like, you know, I used to be really adamant about not moving the fairgrounds at all, but with this report and the backup I got, I'm not so against this anymore. But you need to plan this out a lot better. Jean, we've been in Hilli, we've been trying to get, trade Don Loughlin's land, those four parcels, for how many years, you know? So I'm going to tell you what, this, dealing with BLM ain't just a, they'll take their time. We may have two more presidents dealing with BLM land by the time you get the right to that land. Don't trust, I don't trust the BLM. You can ask the mayor, you know, you know more about this land swap than I do. The temperature, you can't put it down in Lake Havasu, and you can't do it in Bullhead, 115, 120. It's still the same temperature, so you'd get that one all right. You got a trailer park going on there, 50 units, 50 toilets. Do you have the water to that? The water's going to be your most important thing. You better have the water for that. You got overnight horses that you, it's going to be easier to do your overnight horses at the fairgrounds. These people can't leave their horses traveling from Texas going to a rodeo in Northern California. They can't leave them in there 24 hours. They have to have a stall to park them at night. That's law. I don't know that's ever, hey, when was the last time you let your horses out? But that's a good place for that one little corner right there, your, whatever. You need to do that. The Epcape of the old road is right here. You got to rename it Pot-Hole Road.
We've already used that one.
I mean, I just came up from Through Sharump this morning. It's going to be great for me. That's seven miles closer. That's 14 miles one way with a, my pickup truck, it only gets a mile an hour, a mile a gallon, it seems like. And you're not going to let the voters have a say-so on this. You don't like put it on the ballot? How much money? Are we talking 100 million? 200? You're not going to let the voters have a say-so on the ballot like we did when we took over RepCor. That was put to a boat. You're talking some major money here. That's only 80, 70 or 80 acres there. We just had that 290-acre parcel of state trust land down there in Bullhead City. They only got 2 million, 2.4 million. You're not going to get much for the current fairgrounds. And you're moving it from one neighborhood to another. You got neighbors there too.
Thank you, sir. Gary Pierce.
Actually, my name is Greg Pierce.
Oh, Greg.
And I'm here actually to represent a contingency that I think that we're not overlooking, and it's the vendors. My wife and her two friends here are vendors that come to your fairs and parks showing their product. And so I'm here to express our concerns, and I'm very honored to do so. Small businesses are a backbone to commerce and capitalism and the free market. Your decision to relocate really is based upon what you guys know. You're much more acknowledged on what the effects are, but keeping in mind of us, the ones that show up and interact with people that come to the shows and venues and fairs, they don't get to, they don't interact with large businesses. When you go to Walmart, you don't get to hear the stories of these families that come When they, they not only purchase from us, but they ask us questions about our products, and then they open up and talk to you about their lives, their children. My wife represents jewelry and purses. The other ladies have candles and other objects. Once in a while, we'll have a family talk, and these families don't have a lot of money. You've got four or five people in a family. We've actually seen people come to your fair, well, not your fair, but your, the previous fairs, and they leave because of the costs that are incurred in having the enjoyment to come to the fair. Parking, food, rides, and beer, and also purchasing something that they're not going to get at a normal business. Now, I'm not putting down established businesses. They have a major purpose in our commerce also. But we provide the ability to have actual personal contact, and sometimes, many, many times, they walk away with smiles on their faces. My wife represents a very inexpensive costume jewelry, one of her products. And every once in a while, we'll hear an amazing story, a cancer survivor. I'm a CDL driver. I drive for a big family here in town. And the gentleman talking about Highway 40, you're definitely going to have to make that a priority because you have to literally drive, I'm kind of getting off base here, but you have to literally drive in, off the road to hit all those potholes. Well, anyways, may I continue?
Little bit.
Thank you. Our concerns are basically in the aspect, I should get back on my point. The outcome of your decision is based upon our, the costs that we incur, our investment, our time, our product, and then what we have to pay to go to your venues. At one time, it was 250 back in a few years ago before COVID. Now, the upcoming one is going to hit $780 for a 10-by-10 facility. My wife takes up either 10-by-10, 10-by-20, or 10-by-40 she can do. $750 for a 10-by-10? Our bottom line, literally, we had estimated that if we go with what we would like to go at this upcoming fair, we'd make $100. We can't afford it. You're taking a lot of other vendors that are thinking of the same concept, that this is so expensive, we won't be a part of your show. The only people that'll be able to afford it will be corporations and big businesses, and the destruction of small, family-owned, run little businesses. If I'd real quick like to talk about Kingman's fair that you have now, you have a $2 million, from what I understand, money to help kind of rebuild that facility or improve it, because it's a nice location. And I'm thinking, why not two locations? Because then you can have two venues going on, drag racing, motorsports out in the facility that you have or thinking about, or out by the airport. Allowing your industry or your, the county to make money because it allows more vendors to come in too. The financial and the future participation of us vendors, and there's a lot of them because we speak to hundreds of them, we're being priced out. And also, you're pricing out families. A family of four, I've seen walk up to pay it, but then when they, you know, 20 bucks for the adults, 10, 12 bucks for, I'm, you know, estimating pricing, but it builds up quickly because parking admission, rides, foods and drinks, and then wanting to buy a little something that they can't get at a store.
Thanks, sir.
In closing, if I may?
Wrap it up.
Yes, sir. So I'm reaching out to the public and you guys to consider the full picture, because Mom and Pop, we won't be able to interact anymore with these kind of pricings, and we do hope that you get a location that is beneficial for all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure of the board. Supervisor Bishop.
Chairman Gould, I think this is, this is a plan that's workable. I agree with Supervisor Johnson. It'd be nice to have it in one nice, neat little package, but I like the location a lot. I think it's, I think it's the perfect location, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it, so order. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned.